Okay, good evening, everyone. Okay, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody that came out to the town hall meeting. It's going to be a little informative at first. Then after that, we're going to take questions and go into what we did before our engagement process with interaction. First of all, just want to give some updates on some things that are going on in the village. Some things that you probably weren't able to attend some of the meetings and some of the things that were discussed and passed here recently yesterday. Yesterday, it was brought up about the emergency communication center that was talked about, I think, a week ago or two weeks ago. And then they came back, we had a special meeting yesterday at 6:00 to talk about that. And we had representatives here from CalCom to just, and I was told, just answer those questions specifically, even though I asked our village manager to have them to come out to answer general questions about CalCom. But I was told that that's not what this was for. But we didn't ask them to answer questions about the service. It was self-explanatory. We got the little packet and everything that was in there. So that was self-explanatory. But they weren't able to. I was hoping I would be able to bring some of the concerns that the residents had about CalCom and their service back to the town hall meeting. So we have to wait another month because I wasn't able to ask those questions. But it was still passed that we dissolve our old 911 board and create a new one with the region. It would be Cal Park, Midlothian, and Saw Village. And we would take the department heads of the safety, which would be police, fire, and ESTA. They would be on the board along with whoever the mayor designates and the mayor himself. So, and that was passed. The reason why I voted no, and I'm just, I'm one person, the reason why I did because they've had this since July. And me, I'm sorry, as an elected official, I'm tired of getting something at the last minute without having the chance to further research it and then tell me to go ahead and pass it. We will explain it right now and then you pass it like we did yesterday 10 minutes later or be brought up for vote. That type of, I just don't like it. I'm sorry. I don't know how everyone else feels, but same thing when you buy something, especially something that's going to cost you an excessive amount of money, you want more than five minutes to think about it. At least I do. So that was the reason why people are asking, why did I say no? That was one of the main reasons. You know, you've had this for a while. We could have discussed this for a while. If there is no alternative, fine, that's no problem. But still, don't tell me that we had this deadline was July. Here it is September. And if you don't do this now, then we have to, you know, you're going to have no other recourse but to leave out and join another communication, which, I'm sorry, I don't like to be pressured in the politics or pressured in the decisions. Okay, also, what was talked about is, does anyone know about the, I guess you can call it CDBG plus MFT money that's coming in to resurface 223rd Street all the way from Torrance Avenue to Cornell and from Cornell to Saw Trail? Has anyone heard about that? One, two, three, four. So the rest happened, okay. There's going to be 600, and I just want to set the record straight. MFT, that's your motor fuel tax. It's not a grant. It's not something you apply for as a grant. It's money that's given to each and every community based on how much money that the area takes in for motor fuel. In other words, that little money that you get, I don't know. I would say on a gallon of gas, you probably have, if it's $2.50, you probably have close to a dollar on taxes, just like cigarettes. It costs more for taxes for cigarettes than it does for the actual buying of cigarettes, but they call it sin tax. They're getting ready to try to go up into Cook County for pop. I don't know if anyone heard about that, but they're going up close to one cent per ounce. So you think about it, you got a 32-ounce bottle of pop, you're going to pay 32 cents more just for the tax so they can help balance the budget in Cook County. And guess where we live? Cook County. So that's, more likely, we'll get passed because they need to balance a, what was it? I think it's $14 million. And if they do that, they will definitely balance and have a surplus. Just wondering where that surplus is going to go. But they will. So I think it's going to, it's going to happen. So look for that in Cook County. The surfacing is going to take place, I would imagine, next year. It'll basically look like the east side of 223rd Street. If anyone wants to see how that looks, how that's been resurfaced, that's what they're going to do. They claim we're going to use $600,000 of MFT money and $200,000 of CDBG, which is your community block grant funding. I, I've always harped on this, that CDBG money can be used, it can only be used in suppressed areas, areas that qualify. So if I use up all my MFT along with that, how do I fix the rest of my village that needs road repairs? Because you can only use motor fuel tax on road repairs or infrastructure for the roads. So every year, when we get the CDBG money and we use it collectively with the MFT, we just do it in certain areas. What about the areas that pay the most tax or areas that does not fall into that group? What do you do then? How do you fix those? And they're going rapidly. The whole village has to have a makeover. It's been 50-some years since we did any major makeover. We've been fixing what happens. In other words, when that pipe bust, we fixed that. When the street crumbles, we fixed that. What about the different items and the different things that the village does not fall under that? How do we fix that? Do we let it go until you can no longer, now it's an emergency? Those are some of the things that we have to look at because those things are happening. This village should be 60 years old next year. And the last time we did any infrastructure was 60 years ago, unless it was an emergency infrastructure. So that part, I just wanted to enlighten. Close to home, your Public Works, which I am on that board myself and trustee Jones, we're both co-chair of that particular, well, Public Works Department. And they give us a, and they give the village, Kevin Weller does, a report twice a month. And those that weren't able to be here for that meeting, I just want to highlight some things that were talked about. First of all, it was a question. And this was about, about a month ago. And it was asked, and I'm going to ask it tonight, how many people feel that the streetlights, the new ones, because all of them are new, are just as good or better than the old ones? How many feel that? Really? So everyone, most people think that the old ones were brighter and better?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay, well, they claim these new ones are brighter. They claim that the new ones shine more light per square inch. Me, myself, I've seen it, where I'm at, it lights up a little bit, you know, it lights up a little more than it did when the other, the other ones. The other ones were yellow lights. You saw them, they were kind of yellowish. These are LCDs and LEDs, Light, Emitty, Dial, LED. LCDs are like crystal dial. So there is a difference. But they claim these are, these are better. And they also claim that you can take the light, and I don't know if it's a remote control or if there's a device that's inside of the fixture on the pole that you can plug into and actually turn up the wattage. So that's something that I've asked Kevin to look at. And if that's the case, can we turn it up throughout the village? Yes, it's going to be a little intensive as far as maintenance intensive, but if the people feel that they cannot see well, they're the ones that, and we're the ones that are paying that, paying that bill. So that's something that needs to be looked at. Does anyone here have any problems with their lights not working? And if so, please get with me by the end of, at the end of the meeting. I can write your address down and also submit that to Public Works and let them know. There's been, with the water, there's been testing. You just, we just received, I think it just got, went to the mail, that they didn't want to get the testing results of the water treatment or the water itself. No one got, okay, it's out there in the quarter, in the, on the table. You can get a copy of that. This has to be done every quarter to let you know the chemicals and let you know the, if there's any contamination in this. So what kind of level do we fall within the parameters of IEPA? So all that is there, but it should have been mailed and you're saying that it wasn't? Okay, okay. So that should be mailed out to let you know because we don't control that. IEPA controls that to let you know. We don't even control the testing. We don't even know where they're going to test from. You know, if anyone been fortunate or had any problem, not problem, but had any encounter that someone that tested, came out and tested in your house, because they do that. No one has? Okay, well, they do. That does happen. They don't know when, where, why, but it does happen because that's what they have to do. The IEP has to do that. Also, on garbage day, if you see any illegal dumping, please call the police. Also, branch, well, I'll get to that next. Cutting your grass, they ask, that we do, then they're talking about trying to enforce that. There is an ordinance that states that you shouldn't cut your grass with the grass flowing out to the street because you will clog up the drains, especially when it rains and it all flow right there and clog it up, they have to come out and fix it. And there is a ordinance, so you will be issued a ticket if someone happens to call on you. So just when you get to the edge, turn it around, make sure it pushes back in to the grass itself. The hydrant repairs are going. I personally asked that I want to see a map of how many we have actually replaced and how many we need to replace because the money is there for that. The money is actually there for that. So unless it's an issue where we have to go out and we have to shut two valves down and we have to replace those two, because that does happen. They cannot cut the one that directly relates to what they're working on. So they may have to go down two, two other B-box, well, two other boxes. And they have to isolate it that way because the other two valves won't shut it down. But if you don't, if you, you wouldn't know. That's another issue. You wouldn't know if yours fire hydrant is not working. We're currently, as Public Works, working on having markers put on the hydrants that don't work. Little bags that go over the top of them so you can kind of know so when the fire department knows. And also, I look at it like this, if you know yours is not working, come up to the village hall and ask why. You've been sitting on there for two weeks, been sitting on there for two months, been sitting on there forever, however long, find out. Don't just say, okay, well, I see it's that way. And then a month later, two months later, you know, you still see that bag there. Inquire, ask. That's your money. So we're working on trying to get markers, instead of, they were painting or putting something on it this way, instead of you having to pull up, not you, but the fire department pull up and someone doesn't see it and they start taking the equipment off to fight a fire, they can see it ahead of time when they pull up and keep on going to the next Let's see. Vehicles, Public Works is working on their own vehicles and they're working on vehicles that the village has. So they're working, they're stretched out. They're working on vehicles from ESTA and they're working on vehicles and it's saving the village money by working on the vehicles rather than taking it to some local person because the change in oil, they may charge us $40 this way. All we have to do is pay for the oil at a wholesale rate and change the oil. That's a good thing. There was a, okay, storm sewer repairs. They've been cleaning out the storm sewers due to heavy rain. And also, over in Lincoln Meadows, and there's a place in, Lincoln Meadows on Old Brook and South Brook, and then there's a place in Deer Creek, 914 Mary Byrne. They're working, they had a sinkhole where the storm sewers are. Now, I asked about that also, and the one in Lincoln Meadows has been there for a while. That's not brand new. And when I saw it, it's kind of scary because you see a hole right underneath the sidewalk per se. They're working on trying to fill that in because if there's a void, something goes over it, other than just you or something heavy goes over the sidewalk, it can't actually cave in. So what they're doing, they're going to pour asphalt. We have to get concrete at some point in time, but right now, they're going to use asphalt. It's a quick fix. So if it goes through the winter time, it'll be sturdy enough to have anything to go over it, be the trucks or anything that has to plow to make sure nothing happens. And then next year, when the concrete and when we pay our concrete bill, we can get concrete to fill into that area because it's been changed. It's been fixed, but it has to be filled in. There's tree branches. Has everyone put their tree branches out? They should have been out by the 11th. Does anyone here have branches in front of their house? That's good. Because they were supposed to have been put out by the, I'm sorry, set out by the 11th of September. So if you don't have any branches in front of your house and they haven't picked them up yet, that means you're in compliance. That means everything is fine. Parks and playground, the parks. Did anyone hear about this? I guess you would call it the grant that the state had for $300,000 to fix the ballfields and Arrowhead Park. Does anyone know where Arrowhead Park is located? I see school board members know. That's right by the, school is right there by Wagner. But if you know where Wagner's at, there's a park that's adjacent to it going east. That park there, they want to fix the ballfields. I think it's three ballfields there and park equipment. And they think that this $300,000 that we're going to get is going to be enough to do that. Only thing I can tell you is after the meeting, please talk to the school board members and they'll tell you how much their one park costs. So if you think $300,000 is going to take care of all three, think again, this sounds good, but it's not going to, especially ballfields. You got to drag. Let them tell you after the meeting's over how much money they paid for just the playground. So it sounds good, but reality, $300,000 is not going to do all of that. So what happens is you end up signing a contract in here, and I'm going to be a little, whatever you want to call it, but here's something on it. We have to sign a contract and I give you $300,000 on it and you can bill me for the other $300,000. But I just got to bid with you and now another bill for something that we could have done a little bit different. And then the last thing, landscape work. Landscape work is basically when they come out and do some repairs, be it fire hydrants, be it sewer repairs, whatever, they have to actually dig up an area and they mess up in front of your home or whatever, they actually, actually put that back. Either with seeds, sod, definitely concrete, they have to break up the sidewalk, anything like that, to put that back in. Right now, that's going, that's ongoing. If you have a problem with that, please let, let me know or any other trustee know that's, that you, that hasn't been taken care of in your area because it's supposed to. When they do that, that's included in the price of actually tearing it up. So that's something that you should always stay on top of. Sometimes they miss, sometimes they don't. But most times, it isn't coming upon you as a, as a resident to make sure that, you know, that you don't have to continue to look at the eyesore or walk around something that you really don't have to do. And the last thing, trees. Is there anyone, I know they did three areas, but they have, the last I heard, they have almost 300 trees to knock down. How many they going to do between now and the time when it gets not too well, where we cannot do a lot of work? But you, because you can always knock trees down. You can knock trees down in the wintertime. There's nothing there. It's just a matter of you getting out there, knocking them down, racking them up. In the rain, not too much because trees cut differently when it's wet. But in the wintertime, even if there's no snow, so it's 40 degrees outside, they can knock the trees down. So, but, and I'll say this again, but it's going to take you a while to get that tree replaced. We can knock them down, they can cut them down, but that takes a while and I'm pretty sure you have to have grants. That's a lot of trees because there was a lot of emmeralash trees that were, because the reason why they did emmeralash trees, they grow fast and they grow thick. And the boar came from overseas and it got infected in this area and that's what happened. And it went right through the trees and it takes about two to three years for that tree to really get infected and they eat from within. And you kind of know when you have an emmeralash boar on your tree, you'll have suckers come out of the bottom like little, like a little bush because it stopped growing at the top because it can't get any further because they eat through that. Okay, well, that takes care of that. Based on that right there, are there any questions on, on that part of it? Let me, because you can hear half of what I'm talking about. Yes, Sharon?
You talked about fire hydrants. On 219, yeah, 219, the corner of 219.
Reference to the fire hydrants. You talked about on 219, the corner of 219 and 217, Galene. That fire hydrant has been worked on so many times. It's unbelievable. The grass grows so tall that sometimes it's a safety hazard for cars trying to make that tee and make those turns, especially using Galene to rush to get to Wagner. And every time we have bad weather or rain, it floods. And I'm still waiting for someone to deal with the flood and do something about it and do something about the hydrant itself because they came out, there's something to it. It looks like it's almost like a new hydrant, but we're still having the same issues. And the homeowners on that corner don't touch it or touch the grass, so they don't even cut it. But that's too much moisture.
Okay, okay. You said the hydrant. Do you know that the hydrant is not working or you said there's a problem with it?
It's constant water around that hydrant in that grass area. So the neighbors, the homeowners don't even cut it. But then when it rains, it spills over into the street. And if it's cold and raining, now it's a big sheet of ice. And it's really a hazard for cars.
Okay, there's 219th, is that?
In Galene.
Right, Galene.
Across from, not to tell his business, but across the street from Mr. Stewart used to live.
Okay, well, I know where that's at, but they may not. But I just wanted to try to get an answer. Is it 219th? Is there, is there an intersection?
28. No, by your, by your house, it was 219. You was on 219.
On that corner where you turn and all ice builds up.
Okay, so is it 218th and Galene? Okay. Okay. All right, I'll have a look at that. You said there's water.
Well, you'll see the, you'll see the hydrant. You'll see the water.
Are there any barricades around it?
Not anymore. It used to be, but not anymore.
Okay.
But you'll see the tall grass as soon as you turn onto Galene, you're going to automatically see the tall grass. You can't miss it.
Okay. And you're saying that the homeowner that's involved doesn't even cut it anymore?
They don't cut it.
Probably so saturated that it probably go down.
It's not safe for them to cut. I actually know the homeowners if they want.
Okay. That's it?
I have one other question. You said what you've said so far, but I didn't want to forget it. It's regarding the trash. I was here and the company said that they were going to be offering, even though they didn't speak to the community, because a lot of people in the community I've noticed have recycle garbage cans. So to put that in the contract that you'll give all of us one, well, some people don't need it because they already have one. So I would like to know, is there another option of possibly if someone need an extra garbage can and they might not want the recycle can, we switch it out?
You mean getting two regular garbage cans?
No, get a, get a garbage can, like for instance, if the rodents, the squirrels have eaten through the garbage can, it's all eaten up, instead of getting a recycled garbage can, we get a new garbage can?
If your garbage can is all eaten up, you call with Public and let them know where you're at, that you want another can.
Without charge.
Oh, definitely. And I'm just giving you a little heads up, recycle can?
Yeah, when will we get those?
As soon as you request them. There's no charge. How would they, because they wouldn't know that you want to, they're not going to drop a can off at your, at your house just to be dropping one off.
But wasn't that in your contract that all the residents will receive one?
You, on request. If you want a recycle can, you just call them and tell them, I want a recycle can. Doesn't, they actually make money on your recycle can because you did the work for them. See, your garbage can, they have to pick through it and some people don't do that. But if you do the work for them, all they do is take that to the recycle area, weigh it, get paid, keep going. So it's up to you to call and say, hey, this is my address and I want, I want a recycle can. And after the meeting's over, I'll see, I think I have the number on me, but I'll look to see the number that you can call. Don't call the village, call them. I'm sorry, he was next. Yes, Larry? Could you give the mic?
Yeah, in the beginning, you were talking about this vote last night and why you voted a certain way. First, first, I'd like to know what was that voting in as far as, you voted one way. You base it on, well, I voted this way. And I understand that the vote didn't go in your favor, but you wasn't voting against the whole board. How did that vote go? Three to three, four to three, three to four?
First of all, the vote was for create dissolving. Our ESTA Board Emergency Services Board that we have, basically our 911 board.
Yes.
Dissolving that and creating a new one because we had our own 911. Creating a new one that would be made up of the communities that are into CalCom.
Yes.
Okay. The 9111 money and the surcharge money that you see on your cell phone and landline, that's what comes in, that's what the state will take. So now, you have, we have, we do have some bonds that are left to be paid that we acquired equipment for just 911. Guess what? We have to pay that out of our funds now, out of the taxpayer fund. That 911 money goes to the state and then when they get it, they'll distribute it as they see fit.
Okay, I got it.
So I voted against, the reason why I voted was because I'm tired of you telling me today that if we don't do this tomorrow, then we're going to be in dire straits. You've had this agreement since January. The deadline for that agreement was July. Why didn't we talk about it between January and July? Now here it is September, we got a deadline. If we don't do this by a certain date, then we're going to get put out of CalCom and go wherever. It's not that you won't have 911 service, you just won't have it where you get your regular service.
My question was, it didn't go in your favor even though you voted no.
You win something, Larry, it's not about?
My point that I'm getting at is, how did that vote go?
3-3-1.
That's what I was asking.
I mean, 3, that's way, way good.
If you understood why I asked and how the vote came out, you'll get it.
Okay, well, it was 3-3-1.
3-3-1, yeah. See, and I see that. See, and I understand how you voted, why you voted the way you did. You don't have to explain yourself because I wasn't here last night for that meeting. But when it's 3-3-1, do somebody have to be here?
Reason why I did that, Larry, is I'm an elected official. And I'm going to explain everything and I'm not going to be untransparent. I'm going to be transparent to let you know why I did such and such. I owe that to the residents that put me in this particular position and each and every trustee owes it because you put faith... because you put faith in the people that elected you, that you would try to do the right thing. Not saying that you would always, because there's some things that you make mistakes on, but not knowing, you tried to do the right thing.
The point I was getting at is, do I have to go to each trustee and ask them why they did it that way?
You just asked me.
Yeah.
I mean, you can, you have that right to.
I know, but see, you're making it to where you have a town hall meeting where you're gonna explain yourself. I understood it with a 3-3-1. That's why I asked.
Okay.
I didn't have an explanation for any one of it.
I know you didn't. No, you didn't. No, I just, that's just me. That's just how I am.
I know. See, and the thing is, the rest of the people need to know 3-3-1.
Most people that I've seen in here tonight know 3-3-1.
See, and see, if you know how things have been going, and it's been 3-3-1 for a long time, I think I wait, I can't wait till Tuesday to see how that 3-3-1 works out. And if you understood, I just said that. Your close friends, 3-3-1 ain't gonna be the issue as a...
Well, we gonna be that, but I understand.
Simple question is, say if I did call the people that told them I want a recycled car, now do I get a little discount on my garbage?
No. 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 You know what I'm saying? They gonna make money off of my garbage, can I get something? No. They just gonna say, "Thank you," and keep going. Right there. Thanks a lot, Ben.
So my question is, when the police or ESDA, whomever, writes a ticket, and we have ordinances, and those ordinance state how much this ticket, the max that this ticket can be. But when you go to court, it's at the judge's discretion of what that fine actually is. So I guess, you know, just as a heads up to some of our residents, one, we need to look at who we're voting for as our judges. Look at their background, their records, what they're doing, because in my eyes, it's a waste of ESDA's time to write a ticket that's worth $400 and a judge gives a $50 fine.
Are you talking about adjudicators and prosecutors? Or you, because you say judges, or are you talking about Markham?
The court that we host here in Saw Village.
That's an adjudicator.
Okay.
He is a lawyer. And we go out and hire our adjudicators and prosecutors.
Okay.
And it's different than a court at Markham or downtown or whatever. This is the local court. The laws let us do that.
So the trustees select and hire the guy that sits back there in the row?
No.
Where does that come from?
Mayor.
So the mayor selects who does that?
Yes.
Okay, so I charge that task to our next mayor, Father.
That's why, that's why you make sure who you put in office, because they do have an adjudicating task. They have a task to, a lot of things that we cannot as trustees.
Well, I put that on you, Father. My next question is, well, not question, but a statement, is that we need to take a look at some of our ordinances and the values that we place on them. There is a sign in the middle of our, what do you call those? On 223rd, the median's. Walking your dog on that median is a fine up to $750. That's ridiculous. Just saying.
That's a good idea. I mean, we should be, that's why you have an ordinance review committee, so they can go over such ordinances. Some don't have teeth, and some are ridiculous. And they need to be talked about. Those are the things that you talk about as elected officials or committees that you appoint as the mayor, so they can go through some of those things. They need to take them out, let's repeal, let's amend, and let's make sure that the things, the orders that we have pertain to today, not what happened 40, 50 years ago. So that's a task to take on rather than some other tasks that we chose to take on or that's brought to the board. And you're absolutely right, some of these ordinances need to be. However, when you say that you go to the judge, basically adjudicator prosecutor, there's a, in all of the different ordinances where there's a fine, you have a minimum or the maximum. Some, and that's true. That's up to the adjudicator, is he gonna give the max or the minimum? The minimum may be $50, and the maximum may be $500. We cannot set that. We can't tell them how to do. However, if we have laws on the books and a person comes before our adjudicators or prosecutors, and you, basically you're right, come before our local court, and they're let go, then why are you out there writing, you know, I mean, not orders, but tickets? If the adjudicator is saying, "Oh, well, we throw that out," then you gotta let me know why. If the officers that are writing the tickets are doing it wrong, let us know. Because to write the tickets and then you come and throw them out makes it look like kangaroo. So those are some of the things that should be looked at other than some of these other things that are being looked at. And that's a good point, because I've seen the ratio of how many people actually, you get a ticket, you get a ticket. There's some cities, I've been in them, where you get a ticket, you go to court. Before you can get into the courtroom, you're in the hallway. And they say, "Are you here for a ticket?" You say, "Yes." Well, you can do one or two things. You could pay me $50 right now, right here, pay this fine, walk out, nothing on your record, or you can throw the dice, go through that door, have a seat. Now which one would you do? You gonna take the chance? I would pay the $50 and walk out, because I know I'm gonna pay, I knew I got the ticket, I'm gonna pay something. Unless it was blatant and you see it. And then a lot of times, that's a chance too, because they write tickets to make money. That's one of the reasons why they write tickets, especially in a small village like this. You know. Anyway, yes?
I have a problem. I've got five requests for information from the village that I've requested documents for. And those five requests were not completed. So the only recourse that I had at that point for the five requests, and these were over a period of time, was to bring this information to the Illinois Attorney General's office again and ask them to intercede to force the village to provide these documents. Now, in other communities, when you request a document, they simply send it. They don't care what it's about, what you want it for. And let me give you a for instance. What, one of the documents that I was asking for was a copy of the village's budget versus actual. Okay, and what that is, is how much the village actually budgeted versus actually how much they spent. Okay, year-to-date, in their budget, or request to the FOIA officer for this information. That's just one. There's four other ones besides that. But for the village, for a public body, to simply not respond to a request by the public, or you, the taxpayers, or anyone for that matter, because anyone can request documents from a public body. For a community, a public body, to not respond to that is irresponsible, and it shows that this village administration does not care about transparency. They don't want you to know what's going on, because, "Well, I'm gonna report what's going on." Okay, that's what I've been doing. And without that information, simple information, it keeps you, the public, ignorant, because you don't know what's going on. And these are simple requests for documents from the village. Now, there are some that are a little bit more complex. Actually, I take that back. Instead of five, there were six. There are some that are a little bit more complex, and yeah, I understand the village needs more time. But to go back and forth with the Attorney General, the village paying an attorney $165 an hour to respond to this is ridiculous. There's no other community does business the way the village of Saw Village does. And you people need to be aware of where your tax dollars are going and why they're being spent so irresponsibly. So I just wanted to get that out there.
Okay, last thing. Joe, do me a favor, because I do. I kind of hurt a little bit when you say "you people," so just say "the people of Saw Village." I'm just, that's just me. That's just me, that's all. But let me answer that question. First of all, if those records are public, if those records are public, you're talking about actuals versus budgeted. I get a copy each and every quarter, because I request it. I don't FOIA anything. I have never FOIA anything in this village, and never will, as long as I'm a trustee. And if they don't get what I want, there's other avenues, and heads will roll. Why? Am I out here representing this village, and I can't get the ammunition to find out? Now, in regards to what you're saying, if that record is not something that's an ongoing investigation, it's not a lawsuit, or it's not a case that they're trying to solve as far as murder, anything like that, those things you cannot FOIA. But when it comes to money, yes, you can. If you have a specific reason, you can FOIA it. How much is it? Actuals to budgeted? It's a press of a button, because I know what he does every time. Because I ask for it, so I need mine. Press the button, five minutes later, it shows up, here it is. And those things, if you don't, they have an agency for stuff like that. I hate to say that you go to that, because yes, if you go to that agency, it's, the village is gonna have to pay. And that agency is the Attorney General. And you go to the Attorney General, he's gonna make it, but in the meantime, he's gonna make you pay him or pay somebody to make sure that that's carried out. And if you don't, it carries a fine. So I don't know why it's not done. I guess they figure, "Well, I'll push them off this time, and we'll talk about it later." But knowing some people is not gonna talk about it later. Next thing you know, they're gonna send a different type of letter that's gonna say, "If you don't, this is what you will have." Hopefully, that doesn't happen, because that's a fine, and the village will pay. May not pay today, but they will.
Can you show us a complete lack of transparency?
Well... Welcome to politics. And it's gonna happen until you have someone that has enough, whatever you wanna call it.
Business act?
That and other...
Commerce?
Well, you keep using those words, but have enough to say, "Okay, enough is enough." Because what you do in the dark will come out in the light, sooner or later. You can only do it so long. It's hard to defend a lie. It's hard, because you gotta remember every lie you told from then on down. So you might as well go ahead and tell the truth, because you can do it over and over and over again. You can say, "I didn't know, I didn't do what I..." But if you have a lie, you gotta have another lie to defend that one and down the road. Sooner or later, somebody can catch you on it. Who's next? Nobody? Where's the mic? Oh, well, we're not, had your dad been passed away about 10, 11 years now, so. Okay, Bernice?
I just wanna piggyback on what Joe was saying that, you know, I sent FOIA requests.
You wanna sit down?
Good. All right, all right. Bernice, come on, what'd you say? Go ahead.
Anyway, I sent a lot of FOIA requests, trying to find out some information. All I do is sit back and listen to what you guys are saying. And generally, I wanna know supporting documents, whatever you sent out. And what's happened is, a lot of times, you send in the FOIA requests, they'll say it's voluminous, you can't get an answer for it. You send it to the AG, and of course, they're gonna keep it investigated a while. But a lot of times, the FOIA there, they encourage, and when I say "they," I mean the Mayor Hanks and the Budget Director encourage you to do FOIs, and you still don't get answers. So, and then a lot of times, you get answered to a FOI, it doesn't quite answer what you're searching for, and they'll send it back, and they say, "Well, we don't have any more records." And I know it's records, because you guys set up NSETEX records. So my, it's wasting our tax dollars, but still, again, you guys... Well, I'm sorry, I'm saying you guys are trying to convince us...
She's talking about the trustees that are on that. She's not talking about you people. Go ahead.
I don't say "you people," because you know what time it is. But anyway, the question is that when we send in for information, we're using our tax dollars in order to get information. This administration refuses to give us our information that's necessary for us to do our jobs or what residents pay their tax dollars for. I'm hoping whoever the next mayor is, that we can eliminate some of that stuff and put FOIs in to ask, frequently ask questions, because every week, somebody come in and say, "What's the balance on the waterfront?" Or what, something like that. That's information that should be out there and available where you could just click on something and get it. And a lot of times, the village clerk says the sub-stuff is on the website, when you know it's not there. So we need to eliminate all that kind of stuff. It's supposed to be transparency. We don't have that here, you know? And people say, "We're using our money." Well, hell, we gotta find out what's going on and how you guys are using our money. So there's no transparency. I'm a big believer in that, you know?
Okay, I mean, you're rightfully so. You're rightfully so. Only answer I have to that, and it's a very simple answer, is you have to change it at the polls. I mean, you can, we can sit here, I can sit here, anybody that's in office or about to try to get into office can say whatever. It takes the residents to do your homework before you involve or get involved or even vote. Because when you vote for a person for the next four years, you're stuck, basically, the government is not gonna remove unless you do something real, real bad. Still blatantly steal or whatever, kill somebody or something. They're not gonna remove you from office. The judges and the powers that be are not gonna do that. So you have to really, really think about who you put in there and ask questions when those particular forums come. Find out. Find out what they've done over the past. Just because they look good and talk fast and whatever doesn't mean that they may be for that office. And that's not just here in Saw Village. That's in the world when it comes from the president on down to your loneliest dog catcher that just has to be voted on. Make sure that that person is conducive to the way you think. Don't wait till they get in and say, "Oh, wow, I didn't know it was like that." Make sure to do your homework. Because once they're in, it's hard to get out. It's hard to get them out, and they're in there, unless they really, really do something stupid. And then, it's still hard, because the judges are not going to remove a person from office just because you don't like them. That's not gonna happen. Where's the mic at now, sir? You have a question? Okay.
Let's get back to the CDVG.
What's wrong with your mic?
The CD.
You gotta speak up.
The CDVG grant. And the MFT fund. Now, I guess my question would be, now, do we have different precincts or different, certain areas in the village that gets the CDVG grant? Because I got some streets on my block that need to be repaved as well. Because I got some streets on my block that need to be repaved as well.
Where you live at doesn't qualify.
It doesn't qualify. Really?
I can, yes.
For real?
Yes. I can tell you that without even looking at the map. Where you live at does not qualify. I didn't say that, but it has to be an area. I thought I had a map with me. But there is an area in the village that, and there's a map, there's about six different areas in the village that qualify for CDVG money. Now, saying that, I'm gonna say this. Each individual homeowner, and especially the seniors that income is frozen, qualify for CDVG money for their dwelling. They have to apply, though. And there's certain stipulations. One of them has to be, you got to stay there. You don't fix it up, and then you move out unless somebody else move in, and you rent, or whatever. There's certain stipulation. We apply, and they told us there's only certain areas in our village that, that actually we can use it for. So, it's not an area where, where you live at, no, you don't. Your area doesn't qualify for CDVG money. However, every place in the village qualifies for MFT. Every area. And it's incumbent upon you, or I won't say you, it's incumbent upon your village engineers, or whatever, to say, okay, here we have, we have a pile of money. We have $500,000. We need to fix A, B, C, and D. Can we do that? More likely, you probably just be able to fix A and B. That's maybe it. Unless you have something that you're going to add to that. But what we've been doing, what the village has been doing since I've been a trustee, is take the CDVG area, because you're gonna get that money, and add a little bit more to it from MFT, and make that happen. But that's just that area. What about areas that pay more taxes? So, th- those are a lot of fixes that need to be taken care of, because you have areas that pay three, three times the amount of tax that most areas don't, and they don't get any MFT or CDVG money.
I got one more. Let's talk about that parking lot in Fayetteville. Now, all they did was just blacktopping. There's still potholes in there. Now, how do you, who, who do you talk to about getting that parking lot done? And done right?
Oh, well, your right may be a different right than someone else may think. But, I think she wasn't in the bag. But I'll tell you this, that area is just like your house. That's commercial, though. You get a ticket if your driveway is, is not done correctly. You get a ticket if your gutter's falling down. You get a ticket if your siding is not doing correctly. They also get ticketed upon their property, and if their property is not done right, they get a ticket. It's incumbent upon us, as a village, to get out there, and, and if you just like anything else, we keep ticketing the person. Maybe they'll comply. They take and they spray. They didn't fill nothing in. You made, they sprayed, and they made it all one color, then they striped it. Wow, it looks new. No, it's not. It looks new. So, that cost them $1,000 to spray that whole parking lot striping. But to fix that parking lot, maybe $60,000, and now they have to redo it. Because you just can't pot it. You have to re-surface the whole. Are they willing to spend that kinda money? Who's making them spend that kinda money? Who's making them do it? Nobody. So that's why you have, you point all you want. I'm gonna just tell you one thing, and I'm gonna leave it alone. Three, three, one. Yes, ma'am.
So you mentioned that the seniors, um, have access to the, to the C...
Yes. Yeah, well, CD, community block grant funding.
Does that encompass disabled, or is it strictly for seniors?
I'm not gonna put the man on Front Street. However, you know me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tap all sources. After this meeting tonight, there's a gentleman that's here, that will probably be able to answer a lot of those questions, because he works for Blue Township. And after the meeting, corner him and talk to him, and ask him, because he can tell you much better. But we'll do that after the meeting, because, you know, I don't want the line to be real long, and we need to go on with the meeting. But he would know. So, everybody's smiling, they know who it is, but after the meeting, because this gentleman does care. He is part of Blue Township. He's part of the upper echelons, I call it, and he's a wealth of knowledge. So he can let you know. But CDVG money is not just for, and there's certain criteria, I don't wanna miss, you know, I don't wanna put the wrong thing out there, but there's some certain criteria that you can do.
Um, you're right. Mr. Burgess, you stated just now on the CDVG grant, that...
C-D-B-G grant.
Um, that, and I really like the way you put that, to where, uh, you read it right out of the book. I don't see that book. But see, and I have to question things, and I'm pretty sure after your tenure here in Salt Village, that you know this real well on that. Am I correct?
Yes.
I like...
It's, 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 I mean, if you do something long enough, you'll remember, you'll know.
Yeah.
I mean, just like anything else, if you say the pledge of allegiance, you shouldn't have to read it from a book you've been doing since you were two years, three years old. So, yes.
So, um, what I'm getting at is, I like the way you put that, to where, are there any loopholes, or any get-arounds, or, um, can we just plain ignore, nor how it should be done? As I've seen over the last four years, things were done, not just haphazardly, but out of the ordinary. You know, and I know that you weren't a part of that with the three, three, one, you know, um, but I'm going to where, are there any other way we can get this? Because some, some parts of the, uh, community are not eligible. Can we get it to where we can change that somewhat, except for waiting on the next census?
Change, change what? The CDVG?
Yes.
CDVG is put there for people that cannot afford. We, only thing the village is doing, we're asking for money to help the village out. They told us we will, but we only gonna do it in areas where it is impoverished. In other words, areas that don't make a certain amount, an average of how much income that they make. That's, we don't set that. The state does, the government does. That's money from the government. We don't set those parameters. We can only build or use CDVG money in those areas. MFT money can be used anywhere.
I understand.
Okay, so, it's not, we don't make that loan. We gonna, just like anybody, like I was saying about your house. You go get that loan, find out what it is I can get. It's simply give a loan after a certain period of time. You go get that. And, and whatever parameters they, parameters that they have, you make sure that you, you can abide by. There's, there's money there. But as far as us saying, can we change that? Just like in the end of law, you don't change it, you change the people that make the law. You can't, you, you can send out all their law, you one person. But you change the people, you put people in there that you can think that's going to be for you. And that's what you're doing.
Question.
Uh...
Is Salt Village considered an impoverished community?
Certain areas, yes. All villages have impoverished, uh, impoverished areas, all. Olmec Flocksboro has them.
Yeah.
Certain areas, yes. Don't look at me like you, yes. Yes. Even though it may look like that it's, you know, it's all flush, there's areas that, that qualify. I'm gonna clean this whole room out.
Well, this is really a, uh, I don't know, it's sort of a question. Uh, recently, uh, trustee always talking about collecting money for book bags. Now, in response to, uh, well, first of all, I should tell you that, uh, the village manager actually said Tuesday in the meeting that he paid $900 for the book bags, because there's no funds. So, but, uh, in response to a for your request, and this is only the way we get information, is we find out that the village manager was reimbursed at $900. And the trustee collected $1,400. That includes the, uh, money from vendors and cash. However, we gave her a $2,000 advance. So my question is to you, uh, you guys, and you guys were sitting up there when it happened, is that she got $1,400. We paid her $2,000. That means there's a difference, what, five, $600? And she, for some reason, these book bags are free, even though, but, but book bags are free when we actually paying for them. And this is in response to a for your request. See, otherwise, if I hadn't sent that for you, I would have never known. But I knew the math wasn't right. So, my question is that you guys are getting the same information we got, and you guys are not saying anything. I, I might, it was wrong, and I shouldn't have to send a for you. You should, whoever should go up there and put a, a question to her. You only collected $400, but we gave you $2,000. So, where's the difference? I mean, was she didn't pay rent, whatever? I don't know. So, I'm just asking, do, do you see my dilemma? And the only way we actually find out stuff that it'll be for you, and that's costing us more, like...
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna say this one more time, cut it slow. Three, three, one. It was, that's how the money was voted out. That's how it was voted out.
Oh, that's...
Yes, ma'am. I know exactly what you're saying, that it was $982 and some cent that was taken out. I'm sorry, that was put into that account, so they could use that $2,000. If you looked at that report, you would see on the report, I didn't bring it with me, I should have, I know that was gonna happen, that F income came in, and it showed where it came in from, the $980 and some dollars. And right below it, it said expenditures. How can the expenditure be the exact amount that was given? So what they did was, the person that did $900 and some dollars didn't give you anything. They got reimbursed the next day. What happened, and this is just my speculation, is when the, the material, or book bags, or whatever came, no one had the money, and it wasn't voted out, they needed to pay that bill. Here, use my credit card, but make sure you pay me back as soon as you get your okay back from the village to get reimbursed.
But that's false and misleading.
That's not false. It's misleading. I mean, it's not false, because it happened.
Well, let, let me say, it's misleading information.
How's it misleading?
Because we're under pressure. He said he actually paid the $900. He never came back and said he...
You didn't have the paper funny. Because you, we didn't, we didn't know.
Wait.
We didn't know until we saw the paper, till we saw the accounts payable, and we saw the detail, how much she got. You know, it's not a matter of, you should, don't, I mean, first of all, as I said before, we can only, we can't, we can't say no. We can, but if you don't have the majority of the vote, it's gonna happen.
Well, listen to my question. I'm saying, he gave the impression that he gave $900 out as a contribution.
Okay.
But nobody ever said that he got reimbursed.
We did know.
You know?
We did know.
Isn't that something residents should know?
When, when the, when we found out, we did tell. When we found out, we did tell, and we had a readout. Trustees got a readout of what, what was done. We did tell, but at the time, if you notice, the village manager, and I'm just gonna say, the village manager said, I gave 900.
That's what he said.
Okay. So, how was I gonna do? Show me?
Yeah.
So, but I still voted no. So what can you do? Like I said before, you're gonna do so much, if you don't have the vote, then you don't have the vote.
What, you know...
You live to fight another day.
I'm just saying, the information that's coming out of this board is misleading.
It's not, no. The information coming out of the board is what it is, because everything that happens, you know, from this board was happening by one person. Because if you have the, the vote to turn it a certain way, then that means you're voting to, the reason why we're here is because of one person. Because the board is divided. So, someone has to break that tie. So, that's, and that's what's happening. It's not misleading, because the trustees that said don't have a reason. They felt that it wasn't right. Other ones felt that it was right. Then you have one person that broke the tie.
Okay, my only last comment is, the average resident who lives in Salt Village doesn't even care about all that extra junk. They'll say they got free book bags, and then you come around and tell them that, no, we didn't get free bags. We, you actually paid for them. That's what they understand.
And you're right, and that's why I stated, that you should, as a resident, find out who you put in there. Find out where your tax dollars are going. It may not be with a thousand a year, or $10,000 a year. Find out where your money's going.
I agree.
Because once it happens, it happens. You can't cut out a spill, it happened. But you should look at it and say, okay, come up here to the meetings. We used to have a guy go from here on around the door. Come up here and ask the question. Like you just got through, ask, ask those questions. Why is this? Why is that? And if he doesn't answer, or you can't get an answer, come back next week. Because all, we, we made it possible that you could ask any question about any topic at any time, at any meeting. We made that possible after trustees that just came in. Because at one time, you don't ask questions about agenda items only. Now you can ask questions on anything, and that's what you should do. Don't you know politicians thrive on you to ask questions? They thrive on that. If I come out here, and walk out here, and I see a whole bunch of people that I never saw before, I'm like, what did I do?
I, I didn't get the...
Huh?
I didn't get an answer from the board.
Then you keep asking.
But I got it from a for your request.
Okay, but you keep asking. You put them on the spot. You can do that with your house, or anything that you do. You put them on the spot, that's your money.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. Pardon me? Yes, ma'am.
I have, uh, two questions. How much money is in the water fund? And how much money is owed to the water fund? You know, when it gets borrowed to pay...
I like those rhetorical questions. How much money is in the water fund? The last I heard, it was $535,000. That's how much is in the water fund. How much is owed to the water fund? Last I heard, it was $1.3 million. That's it. That's, since, they didn't, no, it, it's not a matter of one year, it's just period. That's what you got, that's what's owed to it. There's a question you forgot to ask, and that, that you didn't ask, that you should have asked, is when are they gonna pay it back?
Oh, I asked that.
What answer did you get?
See, I'm still waiting on the answer.
You're gonna be waiting.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Because municipality, that's, that's what happens in municipality. Okay, so, we're on, okay, now, I don't know, does anyone have any other question that don't pertain to that? Is there something there that's, um, happening that you wanna know anything about, or, uh, do you have any other questions?
Mr. Burgess, it's amazing that question about the book bags. What other things are done along that line? To where it's like juggling money, and yet you're gonna always have it in your hand and then...
Wait a minute, if, if any village juggles money today?
Yeah, but see, the way that was put, the regular, um, citizen, he doesn't see that. I would have gone with a free book bag.
But, okay, remember I stated, if you don't understand something, you keep coming up, they're gonna ask you a question. They may tell you, come, meet me in my room, come in the back, come here, because you don't want everybody to hear. But they're gonna ask you a question. You know why they're gonna ask you a question? Because they don't want you to come back next week and keep asking the same question. So they're gonna give you an answer. Now, whether or not you want to take that answer and convey it to everybody else is up to you. Because if you do, then you can come back and say, well, the mayor told me, and the mayor said, I ain't tell you nothing. Because I told you in the back, you didn't have an audience. That's why a lot of time, that the question not answered.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I would really surprise at what Ms. Houston stated on that, because it seems like you have the answers that we really want, and yet we never get a chance to ask the different trustees about this, everything that's directed.
You, that's why after the meetings, that you come to, you pull them over to the side. Or after meetings, if you feel you're not getting the answer, you ask. You would ask, if somebody came and said your, your credit card is over 11, and you're like, wait a minute, I didn't pay, I, I don't know what happened. You would inquire about that. Same thing, steal your money. Inquire where your money's going. Get an answer that you're satisfied with, especially if you're paying taxes. Especially if you've been out here for a while, all of a sudden, now the money's dried up. Where did it go? Ask. And if they can't answer, keep asking. Just, just, just keep asking. But, you know, I've heard a lot of people say, well, you know, they're not, that, that's, you know, that's, that's what they do, and this, no, it's not. There's no such, there's no forgiveness when you don't have, you haven't done what you were told or voted to do.
Mr. Burgess, you know, as you're talking, I, I believe in you, only because it makes sense. But see, to the regular person that looks at it, where they could have asked any one of the other trustees, to where they did the juggling act, and I'll call it, and it's like hocus pocus. To where you're explaining, no, it was never, um, free book bags. See, and you're saying that now, but when I understood that, no, I believed it was free. See, so I'm very impressed with this explanation. But who do you ask that you can trust that sits up there?
If you feel that way, then they should be sitting up there. They shouldn't have got there in the first place. I mean, that's incumbent upon each and every voter to, to do some homework. Don't believe everything somebody tells you. I can tell, I said, I can tell you, and you believe me, because I have never knowingly lied, and I won't. Like I stated before. But you still, talk to your, talk to your elected officials, ask questions. And if you can't get the answers, keep asking. I'm hoping that if I was the person that you keep asking questions, I hope if I delay you enough, you're gonna walk away and won't say nothing. That's what they're hoping. But if you be that tenation, that keep on going back, keep saying, I'm, I'm not gonna move. There was a lady that was here all the time that kept asking those questions. Now she's one of their best friends. So you have to, I gotta shut you, some kinda way. The squeaky wheel is the most loyal. So you, you just, don't give up. This is your... It's your money. Don't give up. Yes, sir.
Don't give up to the kid that got the book bag. To that kid that got the book bag, and his mother didn't buy that book bag at the store.
Okay. That's what it looks like, that's why it's done that way. That's why it's done that way. Are you gonna stand in line and say, "Okay, I got some chicken, I got some hot dogs, I got a little ribs, and also, hmm, I know that that money was going somewhere, I ain't gonna say no, I'm gonna eat this chicken, I'm gonna get these hot dogs, have this hamburger." I'll talk about that later. You have to have priorities. And I'm not just saying this period, I'm talking about anything you do. There's a reason why. There's a reason why I'm giving you free hot dogs. The reason why I'm giving you free book bags. What are you gonna do for the village? I'm not gonna sit here and do this because this is, you got a campaign, I'm not a campaign, you got an election year coming. Be smart. Ask at the appropriate time. At the appropriate time, because each person that's running is gonna have an appropriate time other than right here in the village. We can't sit here in the village and do campaigning thing. Only thing I'm telling you is, be smart with your vote. Find out, do your homework. Because after it's over, you know, you gotta deal with what happens. So, just be smart. These questions that you have right now, ask them what you're gonna do. Why are you gonna do this? What's happening? That's for anybody. And if you're not satisfied, then you put them on that checklist and say, "Okay, well, we'll see." Get your questions answered. So, you don't have these questions, "Why is this like, why is this this way? How come we don't have no money?